Welcome, welcome.
Good afternoon, members. Let's start our meeting. We now have the Secretary for Development, Mr. Michael Wong. This is a session on planning and lands. I'm going to invite Mr. Leng to briefly introduce the paper, and then the floor will be open for questions. Members who wish to ask questions, please press the button, Mr. Wong. For the Development Bureau, and in respect of planning of lands, we have the following priority areas: increasing land supply, enhancing building safety, common spatial data, infrastructure development and harbor fund enhancement. We continue with the multiple foreign approach land strategy. Tongchung East Reclamation and Kootong North planning new NDA projects are being implemented as such. Subject to funding approved by this council, land resumption works with the first way Hong Kong Circle Heartland DNA will commence in the second half this year. As for Yunnan Self-Development, the statutory planning process will start shortly of the about fifteen hundred hectares of brownfield size, some eight hundred hectares or more than half are within the boundary of NDA's or other development subjects. Regarding the remaining four hundred fifty hectares, which might have a development potential, the planning department has completed a review about one to sixty hectares, considered at over twenty percent. That is thirty-six sectors together with other land parcels are suitable for public housing development. The CEDD will kickstart the engineering feasibility study progressively, starting from the second quarter of this year. Meanwhile, the planning, the department is examining the remaining two hundred ninety hectares with view to completing their assessment by end 2020. In September 2019, we commissioned a study on phase one, development of NT North, covering the Shatin Lot March Out development lot and a study on the development of the thirty-two hectares of planning golf course for housing purpose. The two studies are expected to be completed early next year. We are now making final preparation for the launch of a land-sharing pilot scheme, including setting up a panel or advisor, which strive to announce the details and start accepting application within April. In addition, we have commenced study on the development of three urban-squatted areas for public housing. These studies are targeted for completion in 2021. We'll continue to press ahead with the first batch of six projects under the Single-Side Multiple-Use Initiative. Within this year, we consulted district councils about the mix of community facilities proposed for John user complexes, and thereafter commenced the technical assessment, detailed design and other follow-up work as soon as possible. In enhancing building safety, the Buildings Department will make effective use of additional resources to step up law enforcement in respect of slope safety, fire safety, window safety, unauthorized building works and unauthorized dangers and abandoned site boards as far as construction sites. Safety beside BD will make effective use of the additional provision in implementing operation building by two point O, enhance efficiency and effectiveness in handling water supply campaigns. Starting from this year, we are going to use the earmark funding of three hundred sixty million dollars to launch the territory-wise 3D digital map from this year onward and roll out the CSDI for all for operation by end 2020. We also plan to establish the first geospatial lab in late 2020 to encourage development of innovative smartphone application for improving quality of life. On waterfront enhancement, the government will continue to see various harbor fund enhancement projects with the earmark funding of six point five billion dollars. Last year, around two kilometers of prominas were opened up for public use. This year, we'll keep up the efforts and open for other lands within the Victoria Power area for public use. So far, eight members would like to ask questions. They are Lau Kok Fan, Kwok Ah Ke, Helena Wong, Kwok Chun Yee, Abraham Shaq, Fernando Jung, Wilson Jung and Candy Flown. Each member is given five minutes. Mr. Lau Kok Fan, thank you, Chairman. I want to talk about, ask questions on the one eight eight six and one eight eight seven. The government has completed the settling planning for six sites, and there were another twenty-five in the pipeline. So how many resettling applications can be handled each year? And if we count from the start of the planning stage to the completion, how much time is needed? Perhaps I always should have the reply number first because it's arranged according to the zero, reply zero number, it's O four one. Well, it depends on the site in question. Starting from 2014 up to this time, we have been doing this for six years. We've completed one hundred thirty-five sites. We have completed planning for one hundred thirty-five sites. Sometimes we can do twenty odd in a year. And we, of course, we would like to do as much, do as many as possible. It would very much depend on the difficulty or related to individual sites. So you have done one hundred thirty-five sites. How many of them can be used for housing development? But that depends on the follow-up action. Broadly speaking, on the whole, we estimated of the two hundred ten sites, we can deal four hundred and ten thousand seventy percent for public housing. Of the one hundred thirty sites which have been resumed, they would produce about one hundred ninety thousand units. So one hundred twenty thousand units remain to be planned and resumed. So after the planning, they will be the need to do some follow-up works depending on the difficulties. We'll be able to produce some units.
O four O. For a piece of land to become sweet ready, it would take six years. And this is a conservative figure. In terms of town planning, will these six years be able to be compressed even further? But this is precisely what we are seeking to do. Honestly, the room for this to happen will be limited because there is an element of public engagement and there is a need to consult the district council. When we carry out new planning, there will be a lot of stakeholders that will be affected as we cannot remove the steps. So we have to follow the government's steps. We have the sequential process. But if we can make this happen all at the same time, simultaneously, would be a good idea. Instead of six years, can we do it in four years? Now, we are trying. As to whether we can shorten this to six months, it would be a bit of total order. Yes, for some of the land that is under planning, maybe the drainage and all the rest of the work can proceed in tandem. I agree, if things can proceed in tandem, we would make them proceed in tandem. Dr. K K Kwok. Chairman, we put a question to Mr. Frank Chen. Now, when the government started, it was four point five years that people have to wait for the PRA. Now it's five point five years. And he asked me to ask the Development Secretary, we have a two thousand hectares of idle land. The golf course is seven hundred and twenty hectares. We have two thousand hectares for the PRA sites. I think any of these sites could accommodate hundreds of thousands of people. The government doesn't really want to do it. The government is really having this pipe dream to build the land out tomorrow costing us hundreds of billions of dollars. The people are stopping the government pouring money into the sea. And the government is spending millions and millions of dollars to get it started. Let's take the golf course, for instance. Oof Arpa has been appointed to conduct the study. It seems that they are presenting a fake picture. Small development, four thousand six hundred, thirteen thousand for larger units. In fact, according to the report, there are so many developments there. I think the government is really smart there. They can wave the magic wand. They will make it look good, even if they are spending one trillion dollars. And they will make things look good and they will make sure that these China-funded companies will be able to use up the money. But for the idle land and the golf course, the PRA sites, they wouldn't, they wouldn't touch it with, they wouldn't touch it at all. Maybe they're trying to prop up the property prices. If the property market were to fall, then they'll be in trouble. So is the government having his fingers on the pulse of the public? Mr. Secretary, you started off as a member of the grassroots. You must be alive to the plight of the people. How soon are we going to do this, use these sites? The two thousand hectares of idle land, the golf course, and also the sites that the Hengyip Cook and the indigenous people have some interest in. Are you not going to use these sites, Secretary? Well, we are adopting multi-pronged approach. The golf course, for instance, at the task force on land supply, we did have a lot of discussion. For the one hundred and seventy hectares, if we use the entire site, it would need really massive upgrading of the infrastructure. This will not happen in the short term. So we are picking the area near Qing Ho Estate, near Feng Cam Road. And that's about thirty hectares. And you mentioned four thousand six hundred units. We have given up on the ceiling. We are embarking on a study. We are engaging the consultant to have a look and see how many units they can fit in. Now, we are limited by the infrastructural constraint. With a piece of land, it doesn't mean it has a high potential for development. Dr. Kwok mentioned some idle land. We did look at some of these sites. Some of them are really fragmented. Let me say to you an example, Dr. Kwok. The green belt size, we have sixteen thousand green belt size. Does it mean that we have to use them all? The green belt site would be important for the environment. We talked about two hundred and ten sites. Now, we have covered the green belt size numbering seventy-seven, but they only take one point four percent of the total number of green belts. We are looking at individual sites, but each site would be subject to a different constraint. It doesn't mean that for each site, one hectare will yield one thousand units. Dr. Kwok, what about the PRA sites, military sites? What about the indigenous people's interests? You stay clear of these areas. Will you tell us a good plan to release these kind of sites instead of just repeating the same old arguments? A military sites, I think I've answered this question. The nature of the sites is different. It is for defence purposes. There is no idleness there. This is the government's position. For the sites that are zoned for small house development, there is a court litigation that is going on. Some of the applications have been frozen. We have to wait until the appeal before we will see whether there is any change to the policy. At the time, the litigation is going on. Other than the frozen area, we will continue with the rest of the policy. Dr. Helena Wong. The secretary mentioned in his speech the improvement of the building safety and DVB one one seven. That's about the subdivided, or the small house units. Now, we have the viral epidemic at the moment hitting raging in Hong Kong. Chang Hong Estate, Hongmei House, Fu Hang Estate, Hung Tai House, were, they get into trouble. I've seen, I've visited some of the new, newly built blocks. I am concerned about the drainage system. In some of these housing estates, there was the wake effect and that this wake effect caused infection to other, other units. But the vent pipe on the rooftop, some of them are short, some of them are long. And in some of the new housing estates, Sook Estate, which is a developed site, they comply with the requirement of one meter long. But because of the installation problem, the regulation doesn't seem to have any regard to environmental factors. For Kam Chong House in Sook Estate, on the rooftop, there is a shaft of vent pipe. And the height is in compliance, but opposite it is another block, Ho Far Court. This is opposite the medium height of the opposite block, which is very, very close. We're not sure what are these vent pipes. I smell some really bad odor there. When we have stagnant situation, wind situation, will the virus be drifting into the neighboring units? After the SARS epidemic, the government has done something about the ventilation in these blocks of flats. My question for the bureau is, in the light of the viral epidemic raging now, will you consider amending the legislation? Is there any room for further amendment to the legislation?
Well, the law is outdated compared with the water supply system. I know the bureau is doing something about the water supply system. But for the drainage system, when it comes to the design, the installation, the material to be used, who will be authorized to do the modification or and repair? But there's little regulation. Would it not affect building safety and public, public health? Secretary, in respect of the case in Taipao. Mr. Chair, the Undersecretary for the, for Environment has been conducting an investigation with relevant parties. Well, if we could find out that something's wrong with the building design, we would make the improvements. And the Buildings Department has issued guidelines. We are going to make a, differentiate high-rise buildings with other low-rise buildings. And the Buildings Department has been making inspections to subdivide the floors. And the member is knowledgeable about this. We are mainly concerned about safety, fire safety. And now, we would also cover the drainage. In the past, we check a percentage of minor works project submitted for scrutiny. We are now going to increase the ratio of projects to be inspected. And if there's anything that we need to do to improve the ventilation system, we will do it. So the Buildings Department has been doing the inspections. Oh, but sometimes we cannot enter the relevant housing units. But whenever we can, we will do the inspections. Mr. Kwong Chun Yee. This is on a session on planning and lands. Two, I have known the secretary for some time. Two, two years ago, we handle some cases about the lack of premises for the creative industry. It's irony that the creative industries are facing such problems. And I thank Mr. Benedict Lin, the Permanent Secretary, on why some premises are not make the best use that we can. And sometimes if a dilapidated building might be over, might be overgrown with plants, and it would be very costly to restore them. And nowadays, the introduction of the one billion-dollar fund on idle land. So I need to give my compliment to the finite people who have been working very hard on this. And I have been working my part. When we, I was, I was helping some animal welfare groups to find the land they need. Of course, we haven't solved all the problems. Now you have provided the funding, one billion dollars. And then there's the other fund of two billion dollars is modeled on this first fund. And now we haven't got anything implemented. Would the secretary tell us whether some demonstration projects will be completed? Well, when we are talking about planning and lands in the estimates, I think we should ask you to elaborate on this new initiative. What kind of progress can you report to us? Mr. Kwong. Yes, Mr. Kwong is very concerned about this initiative. We have approved eight applications free for interim housing. And they will be getting resources from other funders. Some are concerned about animal welfare. Some are for community facilities. We rely on the initiatives of the community. We have approved one with forty million dollars of funding, another one with thirty and twenty million dollars of funding. We have just approved the initial study. The ceiling for each project is sixty million dollars. So if we have one billion dollars, we can at most support sixteen projects. But individual projects may cost less, and as a result, we may be able to support more. We would like to help the applicant to expedite the whole process. And that is to say, if they have the necessary project in mind, we'd like to help them speed up the whole process. If we are successful, and we would certainly take the necessary action in terms of funding to make it possible. We're talking about a term of four years only. Well, it's very rare that we see an initiative starting from scratch. Well, we have friends who work for animal welfare groups. And even if the site can be used, well, if the drainage itself will cost a million dollars, then they don't have a lot of money. Planning is a form of art, Secretary. I hope you would you would be more pragmatic. And since land is so precious resource, I hope you will be able to do more by getting down to earth and be realistic. When are we going to see the completion of the first project? We have approved eight projects. Four of them will have the restoration work completed this year. We hope they will be completed within this year. Mr. Abraham Shaq. I must ask more than twenty questions for this session on planning and lands. I'd like to thank the secretary and his colleagues for giving us very detailed replies so that we can all be sure that the government is doing a good job in planning and lands. How many, how many, how much land can we secure? We have so many projects. Projects in the pipeline, projects that would cost ten billion dollars. He's provide more public housing. The waiting time is five point four years. Mr. Frank Chan says he doesn't have the land, and you are saying that it's not your problem. Well, we have a lot of land that we can utilize, such as the golf course. We don't have to make a distinction of land owned by the rich or not so rich. Well, we have green belts. If we take just three point five percent of green belt land, that would be good enough, and we don't have to go for the land out tomorrow vision. And secondly, please also take a look at our country parks. The Housing Society was asked to carry out a study, and suddenly it was halted. And in order that we can shorten the waiting time for public housing, we must look into this source of supply. And there is a big challenge to meet the public housing shortage. We have hundreds of thousands of PRA units. It's not your portfolio, but why don't you sell these units to the tenants and foster a greater sense of belonging? And then we can use our fiscal surplus to fund more public housing units. That would provide a real solution to the housing problem. And also, I have some follow-up question about O seven O. That is the free sites in Kaikap, which will be resumed as housing sites instead of commercial sites. These sites would would be a very, would be, would be a timely supply for residential building land. Let's look at the overall land situation. Our developed area, it doesn't take up a big ratio. But not many sites are suitable for high-density development. If you say seventy percent of unused land is the total, we treasure our country parks and also green belts. I have answered another question on green belts. I don't have a lot of time. You can do away with the replies. I just want you to assure us that you won't just say no. We need to solve many social problems. Another thing is, what about lease modification, which is also going to provide a lot of land? And some applications have been, has remained unresolved for more than twenty years. So please expedite the process. And also for urban sites, please consider relaxing the product ratio. We should allow more units to be built. Many sites are accessible by MTR. And if you all do this, people would get housing, both public and private. All right, so that's an opinion. Dr. Fernando Jung. I agree with Mr. Shaq that we have, do have a lot of land. But those sites are not for poor people. They are for rich people. They are for rich people or for military purposes. And many things have been have been said about the golf course. It's difficult to imagine why we have so much idle land. And also the Penny Bay Phase Two site is used as a quarantine or or quality test center. It's been left idle for more than ten years. I think the Disneyland should tell us in no uncertain terms what it's going to do about the land. What is the government going to do with so of so many idle sites? These sites remain idle and you continue to tell us that at twenty eighteen prices is going to cost us one hundred and forty billion dollars. But people in the community have pointed out that when you actually commence, you would be more than a thousand billion dollars. And Hong Kong people can't do much about it. It's a very costly project. It's much, it's more than one trillion dollars. Where would the money go? Well, we have Pingchao and Kaoyichao and Lantau and and Diao with such a very good natural environment. And now you want to do the reclamation there.
Well, this is really beyond us. So specifically, you have started on this. Given the raging pandemic and the economy being devastated, you're going to be launching this second round of anti epidemic fund to the tune of something like billions and billions of dollars. The economic situation is changing all the time. Should we be plowing ahead with this project? Should we be staying on track to go ahead with this land out tomorrow in absence of an alternative? Also, for the Penny Bay, Penny's Bay Phase Two, the reclamation next to Disneyland, the sixty hectares there, do you have any specific plan there, secretary? Let me try to say this in brief terms. In answer to Mister Abraham Shaq, the land is there. Is it suitable for us to have any high-density development? Now, we face a lot of bottlenecks, the the traffic constraints, the topography, and also the brownfield sites, members are familiar with that. People are running businesses there, and there are people living there. We have to deal with all manner of problems. Reclamation, the task force on land supply has said that this is a way to generate land. Kaoyichao. The one hundred and forty billion dollars is about reclamation. With the infrastructure, at least, at two hundred billion dollars or so. There are two points I'd like to make here. Is, let me focus on the Kaoyichao. I hope that Let's Go will support us in the way of five hundred billion dollars worth of study. We need to gather together all the environmental data and then all the other data. We don't have to take the decision today about the land out tomorrow. With all the data, we will be able to decide whether we should move ahead. This study is going to take us forty-two months. By twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, we would then have to make a decision as to whether we're going to go ahead with that. Doctor Zhang, if we don't do that, we still I'll be very brief, Chairman. We still have to accommodate these four hundred thousand people, and we have to identify land in the N T. And there are a lot of sites that are subject to traffic constraints. And if you build the infrastructure connection, it doesn't come cheap either, so we have to take a decision there. Mister Vincent Cheng. Chairman. O one seven, O one six. The one, the first one is the C B S, the Cooperative Building Society Scheme. Now, I'm a member of the U R A. The U R A has been proceeding very slowly in the acquisition work. I think the C B S can release quite a lot of land. According to the paper, a thousand or so units can be built, but it would take us twenty twenty-nine, twenty thirty. It's going to be ten years down the line. And these buildings are forty, fifty years old, and they cannot wait that long. So in interim period, how can we accelerate the timeframe? The U R A has been moving very slowly regarding the the exchange program. If we can pull off these programs, a lot of other C B S programs can be launched. So I'm wondering whether there is a new idea from the Bureau. O one six, there's Operation Building Bright. The application is high in number. We have the pandemic raging now. And when we started the O B B one, we also talked about creating jobs. Now, this Operation Building Bright has this element in it. Can we lower the the threshold in terms of the age of the buildings so that we can hire more people, so that we can create more jobs, secretary? Well, Mister Cheng is very familiar with the U R A operation. This is a new pilot. These projects will get underway straight away. Now, this timeframe of eight to nine years would be a very ambitious program. Had it not been for the pandemic, work has already got underway. Now, we have to visit each and every household because of the raging epidemic. We have put this back a little bit. One of the idea, new ideas is that we wouldn't cover the public housing. Now, we have one-third devoted to public housing. Now, whether we can get this done? I mean, we are moving in a very aggressive manner. Now, this will happen in a couple of years' time. Operation Building Bright. The original objective wasn't so much for the creation of jobs. And now we have this element. With the funding available, I don't think we will be able to lower the threshold to less than thirty. We started off with fifty years old, and now we cover forty to forty-nine. And you have to tie in with the mandatory building inspection. Let's see whether we have the resources to do more. Well, O B B is a very good opportunity for us to help the people. And the the cost will be lower, and it will be a good opportunity for the buildings to be upgraded and rejuvenated. Now, for the C B S and Cooperative Cooperative Building Society, I do have high hope on this. Now, you have a number of pilots. If you can pull off, pull this off, we can certainly do more of the same going forward. I mean, you may be hampered by the epidemic, but I hope that you will ramp up the the work. Mister Kennedy, now turn up the mic, please. Chairman. P O six, O six two. Brownfield Site Clusters. The government is very proactive in identify land. The brownfield sites are very scattered, it would be hard for us to gather them all together for development. The government will not give up on even one or two hectares of land. They're prepared to to look at them. There are eight clusters, Yindong, Timon, Taipo, there are eight brownfield clusters between of sixty-three hectares. There are thirty-six hectares of brownfield sites. They are exploring the possibility of building P R H term of twenty thousand units. They identify land for public uses. They also have to consider the brownfield site operations to make sure that these operators can continue with the business. In particular, they are finding themselves in a dire state. We don't really want to see the joblessness go up further despite anti epidemic fund. I've got a couple of questions. Is the government aware of the nature of these thirty-six brownfield sites? And would they incorporate them into the sixty-three hectares? How much is private land? Now, given plot ratio of three point six, government can build twenty thousand units. It is heard that this will go up to six point five in terms of plot ratio. If the government were to increase the plot ratio, there would be implications on the traffic and transport situation in the vicinity. And it is incongruous with the the nature of rural area. How will the government proceed with that? Will the government be resuming the land on basis of N D A? Third, the government is going to spend six years' time to turn the the clusters into state-ready sites. So in twenty twenty-six, the the business will have to move away. In Hongshuiqiu, Hachin, N T A, the multi-story buildings will complete the site formation in twenty twenty-three. Will the brownfield sites be able to tie in with the Hongshuiqiu development for the the operations to be moved there to free up the land for development? Three questions there, Secretary Wong.
Thank you very much. Mister Lau is concerned about the the traffic. The C E D D will conduct the feasibility study going forward. When we have to resume the site, we have to go through the Town Planning Board process. So in terms of environment and transport and traffic, we'll look at this again. Compensation for brownfield sites, Mister Lau must be familiar. When we acquire the agricultural land, we have the zonal compensation system. We do apply the zonal compensation system. It would be hard for us to say that they are Zone A across the border. If it is N D A, it is Zone A in any case. We're grateful to the council that they have loosened up the situation a little bit. The brownfield sites, we have a lot of the the open-air operation. And Let's Go has loosened up the the requirements, and this would apply to this situation. Nothing else? Mister Ray Chen, please.
Chairman, thank you. If I may, put two questions. One five seven. This is about the development of Fanning Golf Course. The government said that the lease will end in August this year. By the time it expires, the renewal will not cover the thirty-two hectares. But there will be a holding period for three years till August twenty twenty-three. My first question is this. Does it mean that in twenty twenty-three, work will get underway to build on the thirty-two hectares of land, which is to the east of Fengkame Road for P R H to be built? Second, for the thirty-two hectares of land, it would be something which is better than nothing. But many people said that they hope that they will take advantage of the golf course more. Is it a foregone conclusion that thirty-two hectares will be the end of the matter? There will be no more, they can be squeezed out of the golf course? Or is it likely the next stage, there will be further consideration? The second question is about the industrial building. Now, we have a meeting with the administration regarding the non-industrial use of the industrial buildings. In recent days, the government has handed down five nine nine F, the Business and Premises Regulation. A lot of premises have been closed, the closure has been extended. Now, the gyms, the fitness center, the the martial arts center and party room and so on are included. Now, some of these premises are located right inside the industrial buildings. They may not necessarily make the application for the change of the use. The government has always adopted this risk-based approach. They will not close them automatically. In the next anti epidemic fund, for those premises that are affected by five nine nine F, if they get compensation, some people are worried that the government might in a way lure these people out of these industrial buildings, and they will become the target for for foreclosure in future. So will you give the undertaking? With five nine nine F, they will be closed for a whole month. And they may get some compensation if they are located in commercial building. Fine, I mean, they they will be able to make the application. But if they are situated in industrial buildings, will they find themselves in trouble if they come forward and make application for the compensation?
Thank you, Mister Chan. On Fanning Golf Course, as I said earlier, it's a question of balancing the different interests and issues. If we use the entire Fanning Golf Course for high-density development, transport infrastructure cannot cope, so we need to take this into account. And the current approach is this. That is a Ni Fang Cam Road Qinghuo Estate. We are going to carry out a study in twenty twenty-three, and then we can commence work in twenty twenty-four. What about the long term? Well, the H A B would renew the lease up to twenty twenty-seven. And then the the next step will have to be something worked out by the relevant Bureau. As for the industrial buildings used by some other businesses. Well, if some businesses are going to get some relief and the businesses will the eligibility might be affected if they contravene lease or lease conditions or other regulations. Well, for party rooms, I've asked around, and no Bureau has claimed responsibility. For example, when you deal with a subdivided fresh and the tenants, and when you offer help to the tenants, you won't enforce the building regulation first. Well, if there are talents who should be assisted, we we would do do it. But we will not offer assistance to the owners, to the property owners. So let's wait until there's the, we have the announcement of the new relief measures. Then on industrial premises affected by the pandemic, they should be assisted. They they are working in a very harsh environment. I want to follow up on the D V B P L one five two brownfield sites. On the eighteenth of March twenty twenty, the government make an announcement. Eighteen brownfield clusters have been identified, but twenty thousand public housing units can be built on such sites. I have already told the secretary that I'm disappointed about the findings. You have looked into one thousand five hundred ninety-seven hectares. Only ten two point three percent can be used for public housing development. Of course, you can tell us a lot of reasons that there are problems with some sites. But the ratio tells us that it's a very low percentage. according to the long-term housing strategy. You are short of thirty thousand. If you can build twenty thousand units in ten years as promise, you are still ten thousand units short. And we have to wait for ten years uh to form the land, six years, and then ten years will be required from start to completion. I'm disappointed by the uh numbers, and I want to help you with one thing. It seems that you are doing this one bit by bit. Uh the brownfield side study is very secretive. We don't know where you have studied. You only give very uh general locations. And members have been asking you for details. We have experts on uh planning and and development. Uh are your problems really problems? You don't have uh the the necessary details to help us. So please give us more information so that there can be public participation in the process. And are you going to set up a working group or something like that on the study on brownfield sites? So that there will be input from experts in the community. I understand there will be difficulties, but two point three percent is an acceptable level. Let's uh put our heads together. For example, you say that some brownfield sites are not approachable by traffic. So how those operations uh carry out? Do they use uh helicopters? And even Mr. Frank Chan has been saying that they will use a sub op- suboptimal sites. So why can't you do the same? And also for refined paragraph two, multi-story buildings, seventy two sectors, it will be used for repositioning uh operators. How how many, how much in terms of G F A are you going to provide? And how many of these operators are willing to move into the multi-story the building? Uh if they don't agree to move, that would just be an an abortive initiative. We have eight hundred hectares uh of brownfield site, which will be developed. Another four hundred fifty have 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 shown some the potential. So the housing, the planning department has looked into the case of with one hundred sixty hectares. Or one quarter of them will be further looked into. It's not that we're only going to do something about the two per- percent of brownfield sites. Some are small and uh and they can be found all over the place. Some are under pi- uh pylons of uh power pylons and cannot be developed. We are talking about public housing development, which is high density. If the size is too small, we 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 will not be able to use it. And we have need to retain some appropriate size for open open storage. We need to keep them. It's good for employment and our economy. As for further details, the boundary of uh these sites, we are going to announce the information uh in the next stage of the study on a building, multi-story buildings for brownfield operations. That's the subject of another study. And it's not that we can unilaterally uh make a decision. We we are doing this study to gauge the feasibility and whether op- brownfield operators will be willing to move into the buildings. Can you be more transparent? You collect a lot of vague information that we don't have uh exact details of the locations, but that's the direction that we are taking. Mister Tony Chan, Chairman. In the uh opening remarks of the secretary, uh one of the key areas of work is, of course, land supply. On uh the government has been working hard to increase supply so that uh we can expedite the public housing development program. Chair Chairman. In this council, the members have divergent views on the multi-point approach taken by the government. Well, I think the government should take on board uh views from all sides. If we continue to argue, we accomplish nothing. I want to talk about D E V P P L O O nine. The streamlining of uh processing of application for development program is a question raised by Mister Chan Kim Paul, our chairman. Uh apart from increasing land supply, if we can expedite or streamline the procedure, we can also increase the supply of housing sites. You have been working hard on uh expediting the process. I think you should uh try to shorten the lead time. Because if it takes years, a few years to get things done, uh the measures would not be very helpful. You want to uh shorten the processing time. You you do not mention by how much in the reply, but certainly there will be some saving in time. But you should tell us more. I want to follow up on the O two O and O four eight. Harbor Fund uh Development. As a member of the Harbor Fund Commission, I'm concerned about the relevant initiatives. We have the Water Friendly Culture Initiative so that people can have access and can enjoy the waterfront. To do this, water quality is very important. I recently visited some parts of the Pomona. You don't have to test the water for test the water quality yourself. Although you say that the Victoria Harbour water quality is good, but that you are talking about the average uh quality. But if you are close enough, you can feel the uh this the odor. We are going to spend six point five billion dollars. We should not ignore uh water quality or the older problem of Pomona. Uh it is mentioned both in O two O and O four eight. So so I want to get a response for the three points that I made on the the harbor front. And also the water quality, the seawater quality, we have seen improvement. This is a a task under the Development Bureau, but the Environment Bureau. We work out with them. Well, yes, uh some, we may be able to provide very good Pomona, but the water quality is something that we need to improve. As for the uh the point on expediting the application process, I'll ask my permanent secretary to reply. Since we started on the streamlining process, we have brought up seven subjects for discussion of the members in the working group. Well, this year, we are going to cover uh the methodology for calculating uh floor area. Different departments have different views on what comes and what doesn't come as a floor area. It's one of the problems, one of the biggest problems faced by the uh industry. So if this can be resolved, then uh I think we will have resolved most of the uh pressing issues faced by the industry, and we are going to try our best to do it quickly. Mister Jeremy Tam. D E V B of year one fifty five, uh small statistics on uh small house uh applications. In the second part of the reply, you you can see that the the number of approved cases was about a thousand in past few years, and in recent years, eight hundred per year. And every year, uh you also approve certain uh applications for the restrict- for removing the restriction on resale. A few hundred cases will be approved annually.
So the conclusion is that each year, when they apply for uh small house development, um forty percent of them are actually for sale. I've got a couple of questions here. First, that you um remove from the restrictions um to sell. My question is, how many cases have been approved? Um but the other question is, how many have been rejected? You have um eight hundred, nine hundred applications of this kind. And it's only that um only um three, four hundred of them are approved, and and many of them are for sale. Now, my question is, how many of them apply for the removal of um alienation restriction? Thank you very much, Chan, for your question, Mister Tam. The application number, I can um collate um the the figures and and let you have them later on. They have to pay the the full premium. And in some cases, they have to fulfill the length of time. And that, and there is no vetting uh in in terms of the quality. Anyone who is eligible will uh or can make the application. I can I can collate the figures and let you have them, Mister Tam. Now, for those um that that make the application, certainly they will be able to get the approval. With the small house policy, if you think that um they will sell them on upon completion, you shouldn't have um the the restriction in the first place. Wha- what is the purpose of um the regional uh policy? Did did you intend for the houses to be um used for for self-occupation? The real estate market is um very quiet, but there are some small houses that are put up for sale. Um they're brand new, they're just um being completed. And forty percent of the small houses are sold upon completion. Secretary. The policy is to satisfy the housing needs of the indigenous people. We allow them um assignment uh subject to certain conditions. This has been going on for a long time. That that's the wrong policy. It would take an awful long time for the small houses to be approved. When the small house is completed, um the the person may want to emigrate. He may want to live in the urban area. Should we impose a blanket restriction on um on assignment? This practice has been going on for some time, and it does make sense to 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 a certain extent. In answer to the previous question, I said that um there is um a legal proceedings and that that is going on at the moment regarding small house policy. And we're not prepared to make any changes pending the outcome of the litigation. After the meeting, if you have the information, please. So would they get the approval for sure if they 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 make the application? Mister Attichu.
Chairman, thank you. Two parts to my question. The first one is land development, and the second one is in connection with small houses. First, question one, five, six. I've got a a comment to make here. From the Financial Secretary to Secretary Wong, uh they are emphasizing that the study on land town tomorrow will be submitted to the council. I think we have to face the reality. The reality being that over the past couple of years, we've seen um massive changes in our society, not to mention the raging pandemic having a devastating impact on our economy. With these um massive societal changes, how do we see this place in Hong Kong? At this critical juncture, I think the government should not um be in a hurry to start the ball rolling. Because with um every electoral election, I mean, in September, this election is going to be very critical for the voters to to choose the way forward for Hong Kong. If the outcome uh is um in favor of this side of um the 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 chamber, and you will not be able to to proceed with um the the proposal, then why do you have to to insist on um having this controversial matter taken here in this council before July? There are so many projects that that subject to funding proposal. If you present this land town tomorrow uh for funding, how are going to proceed? If you don't want to cause any confrontation, uh Mister Secretary, uh I think um the the secretary and um the the top secretary should mull over this matter. Should they um deton- detonate this time bomb uh before July in in electoral, as it were? The other issue to do with land development is um the the development extension of Yunlong Industrial Estate that's to the northern part of Wangchow um site. I hope the Development Bureau, we consider this Wangchow Phase Two covers a dozen or so hectares of brownfield sites. The, I don't think the T H B will be very serious about um the the settlement because they unlocked um the the responsible bureau. There is fifteen hectares to the north. Of course, there are some brownfield sites. I T B has a lot of land. It has some the the dozens of hectares in in the Lupe area. Uh they also have a land town. If you want to reduce the the conflicts arising from the development of the brownfield sites, I hope that um the fifteen hectares um meant for Yunlong Industrial um development, industrial estate development can be called back for the the housing development here. I hope that you will set a good example uh so that um the the brownfield site operators will be happy with the situation and the public works will be able to go ahead also. Small houses, Chairman. Um reply one hundred and twenty, following on from Mister Jeremy Tam. Now, half of the small houses upon completion are for sale. Now, that's um a universal knowledge. I am concerned about um the the sale of the ding rights. Um according to the reply, in twenty fourteen, July to twenty nineteen, um there are one thousand five, seven, one thousand seven hundred and fifty complaints. Um two hundred and seventy have been um sent to the enforcement agencies. Ninety-eight were closed without any evidence. The rest of them are under investigation. The one thousand seven hundred and fifty, not one single case has been um substantiated or has been prosecuted or followed up. The Shatin case, I'm not sure how soon the case will be dealt with um at the C F A. Are you saying that you will not get started with this discussion until after the C F A decision? I'm such you have um spent all your five minutes. Uh Secretary, will you make it brief, please? The Kau Yee Chau recommendation, I'd like to say to Mister Chu that we are going to be conducting a study. Uh when we have the uh um this study finished, we have to take the decision in twenty twenty three, twenty four. That this uh will bring about um a revenue for the government which is higher than the expenditure. The study would cover this aspect as well. There may be certain aspects um that that um. Don't really require taxpayers' dollar. I I think um the the infrastructure development linking up with the NT West. I'm not going to sell this now. I've just uh. Mentioned this in passing. Turn up the mic, please. Very briefly, Chairman. You are conducting a study anyway. What difference would it would would this make if you conduct the study in September and October? It's only a matter of a couple of months. If you present this um in July, then a lot of um the the um projects um. Will be uh will be affected. He doesn't seem to understand what I said. My message hasn't sunk in, what I'm sure. Um I understand what you say. If. There are certain projects um that that are controversial, that is not um. Out of the blue, we have gone through um the um the panel and the PWSC. Wangchow, I've heard um your comments. For land resumption, the lands department will be um. Trying their their best, that the um enhanced um measures will apply to to this resumption. It is an offense um to sell the ding rights. We will have a look at this on a preliminary basis. Um the the threshold is high for the um. Refer to the law enforcement agency, but we'll have a look at this. Question one, two, six. That's about the short-term tenancy. I'd like to set the scene a little bit here. Couple of days ago, I received um a a call for help from Laofa Shan. Uh about um the short-term tenancy. There aren't many oyster farmers there. They have been um there going back um a long way. Over the past couple of years, in particular last year, the. I don't really want to to name any name. Now, there there is um an organization that is renting the site there. And this organization feels that um the the tenancy is in breach of the short-term tenancy in some ways. And there are also unauthorized building works there. And no law enforcement has been undertaken formally. Uh this week, a law enforcement action has been taken. Now, for these um non-government organizations or rural organizations or social enterprises. They're renting these places. And there may be subletting going on, or or there there may not be any subletting going on. For the Laofa Shan Pier, over the past decades or so, the oyster farmers have been using these sites. The government is um implementing this policy and and put things right. There are so many historical problems. And there may be um local forces, um local problems that we have to face up to. We see that um the the um Development Bureau. Um. Does have um the the um effort to put uh put things right. But in Laofa Shan Pier, I I bring this up uh because at the beginning of the week, there were some oyster farmers. Who. Received um warning uh that um they will be forced out and some had um a knife um. Uh pointed at them um and it would would be, it was very embarrassing. I mean, there were. Um rural forces there and the the oyster farmers uh have been there for some for some considerable time. They they are getting on your gears and they've been there for you for donkey's years. And on on this particular question, the bureau or the department may be really thinking about the. Policy matters, but when it comes to to um the the real problem on the ground, the Laofa Shan Pier, um the the oyster farmers there. I'm not sure whether you're going to be doing more to do something about um the the short-term tenancy. The the monitoring, the supervision and how you're going to be renewing and and monitoring the the short-term tenancy. The problem is that um the tenant organization tries to renew the tenancy. But um this this is considered to be in breach and these uh oyster farmers are forced out. There are a dozen or so farm um oyster farmers that um have to be moving out. It would be really unrealistic for them to move anywhere at this point in time. This is a subtle. Policy matter that I hope that the bureau will be looking, should be looking at.
Mister Wong, thank you, Mister Jiang, Doctor Jiang, for your question. From the perspective of uh the uh law enforcement agency and the government, we cannot say, just say we won't enforce the law. Or the lease, but we have to be uh compassionate. Uh I, well, I understand your wish not to mention the name of the tenant, but you please give us the details. To uh my. Colleagues, but you have to understand that uh we have to stand by certain rules and regulations. But is there anything that we can um move around a bit? Uh we we can not have a discussion after the meeting. Mister Wu Chuiwei, three questions. Well, actually, I'm just, I want all offer an opinion first. Uh Mister Chu Hua Tink mentioned the Kao Yichao Reclamation. I hope the government would bear my the uh. The principle of uh getting easy things done first. Kao Yichao Reclamation is controversial. Uh so you cannot just say that you have uh completed the procedure and you must move on. That that shouldn't be the case. Otherwise, the other financial proposals will be hindered. And uh secondly, I would like the government to tell us more information about STTs. A person, you can go to the lands department's website and get some information on STT mainly about uh. Uh s- sites available for STT. And us. And information on uh STT uh which are about to uh expired and then uh. We have to consider the the renewal of these sites. But the late information is provided very late. For example, take the STT for petrol filling station. As an example, when it expires, uh ordinary people won't know. We won't know that the thirty-year STT. Of the petrol filling station is about to end. As a result, if some people. Uh think that certain uses uh facilitated by the STT are no longer appropriate now. It would be difficult for us to offer views to you. For example, in Kun Tong Kun Tong Road and Kongling Road, there's such a. STT site for a petrol filling station. And then it was only after the expiry uh of the Lee STT that we know that it's been now released. And we missed the opportunity to improve Kun Tong, to widen Kun Tong Road to improve traffic. It's a pity. And even if you want to uh release more STT sites along the same stretch. We won't be able to widen the road because the first one uh has got the lease renewed. So we need to get the information uh in in good time, the the term, the expiry date, the location, et cetera. And also. In your opening report, you mentioned that fifteen hundred brownfield sites. Uh have been uh assessed and some are, many are in NDAs. Uh I understand that the fifteen hundred hectares of brownfield sites have all been covered by your studies. Eight hundreds are now covered by NDAs and other projects. Uh the remaining four hundred and fifty hectares. Might have potential and one hundred sixty have been uh hectares have been reviewed and twenty percent will be completed this year. So we are going to have uh three hundred more hectares. Available. I I. Is it what we're going to offer under land sharing pilot scheme in paragraph five? Or are you going to look beyond uh uh the fifteen hundred hectares? So how should one understand the the different sets of uh figures? What changes would there be uh after the launch of the land sharing pilot scheme to the uh land supply situation? I shall be very brief. If a project has carries a lot of public interest, then perhaps we should give the study a chance to proceed. Uh the current term government has been working hard to improve transparency. Can we do more in the direction suggested? Certainly, we are willing to consider it. For example, what information will be very useful to local people? Well, we we will consider. Doing something like that, but of course, uh the amount of information that can be provided is infinite. Uh as regards the last. Issue, brownfield sites. We have seven hundreds of hectares of brownfield sites for which there's no development project. But we we have to bear in mind that the studies for high-density public uh housing development, if they are not suitable for this purpose, they. It doesn't mean that they are not useful. In the all-island plan. You don't have anything that that is marked, view view brownfield site. It can be architectural land or recreational land. If you look at the total figures, we have a few thousand hectares. We are going to cap the land under land sharing pilot scheme at one hundred fifty hectares. Later, we're going to launch a scheme and more details will be announced. Mister Martin Neil. Thank you, Chairman. Land and housing supply is tight in Hong Kong. It's one of the most uh uh. Asked questions. According to government. We have only got the thirteen thousand six hundred and forty newly completed flats on sale last year. It's a big. Decrease from the original target of twenty thousand four hundred and fifteen and then you are now going to. Seven. Seven thousand and five hundred uh new units in the private market and another eight thousand will be produced by MTL uh topside development. So the there's a lot a lot of uncertainty in the supply. According to DVP P R O five oh. After the uh steering commit steering uh group on land supply, having assessed the land. Uh the idea of a land bank. And also the consideration will be taken into account on the public aspiration to improve of. Living environment when it comes to land supply with an aging population, we need to have more elderly facilities. And also, a lot would depend on when the finance committee can approve the uh rarely relevant projects. For example, Thai Lantau Reclamation, Lungku Tan Reclamation. Uh these are all. Long-term targets. Has the government got any the short-term, medium-term and long-term land supply strategy? Otherwise, the target you have set will just be unreachable. With uh scarce land supply, you are going to adopt the single-site multiple use for community facilities. This is good. But according to. Uh DVP uh P R O five one for uh for in which the progress for the first six sites. Under the single-site multiple-use initiative, at least six of them have been the subject of consultation with. The past uh district councils and you're going to consult the district councils again, although the uh. The proposals will have been revised. But of but certainly, the projects should not have been delayed because they are. Their device is such a way that would meet public aspirations, but uh there should be, they should be proceeded with expeditiously. But the for most of the projects, or actually, none of the project has uh concrete timetables. When can they be implemented, actually? Thank you for your questions. Uh the uh steering group on uh. Land supply worked very hard for more than ten months to understand the situation and to look into the various uh. Various options. As Mister Wong Yun-Fai, Chairman of the task force said, there's no pain, painless option, so to speak. Uh there was a lot of discussion on uh land supply initiatives. And in the planning stage, public participation. Is facilitated and if attended the the planning the uh meetings, you know that the. Government proposals will need to be backed up by very substantial the justifications. As for the in uh projects and the progress of the projects, I'll ask the PS to supplement. Uh these uh projects will involve the use of uh. Government land uh unless, so there's no need to do the planning again unless we are talking about. High restriction, but those uh applications can be process very quickly. And uh for government projects, we need to queue up, get the funding support, come up with the detailed design. Before we can build the government uh facilities. So it's under done under the resource allocation exercise and this also, it also requires the funding approval. Uh four members would like to ask questions for uh for another round. Four of them, three minutes for each member. Doctor Helena Wong. I want to follow on on the questions on uh drainage pipes. Or sewage pipes and uh in uh older housing estates such as uh. Oi Man Estate. I visited some of the units. Uh I I brought along some professional people with me. Uh the uh su- the pipes, the soil pipes and the vent pipe is allocated within the units. For public housing, the repair and maintenance of pipes. Is done by the housing department. If the department has done a good job, the pipes can remain in good working condition. For decades, but otherwise uh you they can only last or or. Provide a good service for ten to ten two decades or or so. And uh some some tenants on my uh do the wrong connections or cut the uh pipe short. Would the Buildings Department uh talk to the Housing Department and uh. Step up the inspection of these uh PRH units? From my personal observation, I see uh I saw a lot of uh yellow stains. I know whether it was the. Because of the uh excrement or 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 other types of soil. And some have uh know the vent pipes or the traps uh the uh. The older trap uh is no longer there. Would the Buildings Department work with the Housing Department to step up inspection? And uh make improvements? But this. Well, this is actually part of the portfolio of Mr. Frank Chang. But the Buildings Department has seconded people to work with them. Although the relevant law doesn't apply to these facilities, these pipes in the PLH. But I believe the Buildings Department is willing to help the Housing Department.
Well, the Housing Department said that if there are complaints, they will have a look. But for the general public, they don't have any focused idea what are things all right. They don't know when to invite the Housing Department to conduct a visit. If you're prepared to conduct a visit, we are certainly only too delighted to knock on the doors and let you in. Secretary, will you give us the undertaking that you will be liaising with Mr. Frank Chen about these housing estates? Yes, I'll liaise with Mr. Frank Chen on this basis. Mr. Andrew Wan, three minutes. We've been here for so long, Chairman. The secretary is really doing a good job in defence. We know that in developing land, we are subject to a lot of constraints. That much we understand. But I feel that you have magnified some of the constraints in some cases. You were very smart by citing the legal proceedings in relation to the small house policy. And I try not to venture into this area too much. Secretary, given the difficulties that you mentioned, I trust that these are all genuine difficulties. And also, the brownfield sites, you're going to have thirty six hectares. What about the golf course and the other sites? Have you discussed with the HAB? This is extraordinary time, you need extraordinary measure. And also, the military sites. I understand that this is not something that is driven by Hong Kong, but has the government, in particular, the Secretary for Development, have you come to any consensus in your ruling team that you should make a request with the Minglan authorities in this regard? So have you tried to tackle these problems in absence of alternatives? If there is a slight hope, will you try to squeeze harder? Golf course and military sites. Well, golf course, maybe I didn't make myself sufficiently clear. The government came to the conclusion that we should get on with the thirty two hectares first. It doesn't make sense to have all the one hundred and seventy hectares because the infrastructure cannot cope. And we simply cannot have any high density housing development. So sorry for being so rude. This is something the government has been misleading the public about. It's a chicken and egg situation. If you do not produce the one hundred and seventy hectares, you will not be able to produce the infrastructure. Well, you cannot put it this way. Some of the areas fall within the remit of the THB. The THB will conduct the study on rail and road. And this would have something to do with NT North. And we may have different views by the time these materialize. We have so many options available. And there's so much about the golf course, a military site are different. And there are uncertainties there. The government is aware of this. We're not seeking to change the land use in this regard. Mr. Tony J. Chairman. A reply, PL O one seven. Mr. Vincent Cheng also showed concern about the timetable. Now, how soon can we release the potential of the CPS Cooperative Building Society scheme? The URA is doing this as a pilot. I hope that Secretary, you would consider other alternatives so that we can release the development potential in these cooperative building society sites in urban areas. When the URA selected these two pilots, I don't know what criteria they adopted. PL one sixty is about single side, multiple use. There are six sites that have been listed. I think this is all for the good because the government is really doing something about it. For these six sites, most of them, except one, have no timetable. They are there for consultation. I don't really want to see any delay in these few sites. These are my comments that I'd like to draw attention to instead of having one single side multiple use, we may end up with no use at all for these sites. Right, the Secretary? For the first one, I hope that we will make the most of it. As I said earlier, in terms of compensation for the owners of the Cooperative Building Society, they can get the compensation, they can also opt for the designated housing estate or rehousing estates. Now, Mr. J asked about the URA and how they made the selection. We'd like to have certain scale. In Kowloon City, we have quite a lot of these CSB, CBS sites. And instead of six hundred units, we can go up to three thousand units, and this is one of the considerations there. So for these two pilot sites, if they go smoothly, we will be replicating these in other areas. We have a thousand or so other CBS units. As to whether we can achieve fivefold increase, we are not sure, but we will have a look. Last speaker for this session, Mr. Eddie G, three minutes.
Chairman Two, short questions, if I may. The first one is the land administration in the NT. On more than one occasion, I received some cases that the access roads are leading to the villages. The access roads are sitting on private land, and the owners are closing the roads and demanding payment of money, and the villagers find it difficult to get home. This has to do with the dispute over private land. Now, you give the approval for small houses to be built, but if the government doesn't intervene to make sure that there will be an access road that will remove the interference of these landowners, it would be hard for them to live in harmony. The villages are there. Would the government be doing something about it? My second question has to do with the squatter hut. Question one two oh. Councilors from the NT from time to time receive calls for assistance from the squatter dwellers. And they would say that there are complaints about the UBWs in their dwellings. And they are required to reinstate the dwellings. In one two oh, two thousand and eighty one squatter licenses have been removed over the past two years. In terms of land administration, should the lands department cancel the licenses like this? And private land, I mean, they will not move in on the private land so soon. And they will be moving faster with the government land. But if you remove these two thousand or so squatter licenses, it doesn't make any difference at all. And is it worth the administrative work in this regard? Ms. Bernard Ling.
Yes, for squatters, indeed, it is a bit of a dilemma. It is the expectation of the public and members to do proper enforcement work with regard to squatter areas. But when we carry out the enforcement, we would receive a lot of requests for discretion, discretionary treatment. I think that we have to make sure that the law is enforced. Mr. G talked about the land administration in the rural areas. When a small house is approved, we have to make sure that there will be access to the small house. By the time a small house is completed, if they are debarred from gaining access, then it will become a dispute between these parties, like Mr. G said. But when we vet the application, we will look at the logistics. But if there's any change in personality, there will be difficulties. We take a break for eight minutes, so we come back at five forty five. Thank you.